I know, that's what they said in the briefing session.
John undergoing transformation.
No, 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 it's what we transform into today. But anyhow, I'm very warm welcome to you all and I'm warm welcome to water. You haven't been to one of these before?
Well, happy birthday.
Oh, good, because we have residents for you. So, that's, that's fine, thank you. If we can start, Minister Pritchard's meeting has been laid on table. I read. Thank you. Apologies perhaps as a substitution?
Apologies from Captain Ward and there's no substitutions this evening.
Thank you.
May I just apologize in advance for leaving early, but I've got some work to do for the high tomorrow.
That's fine.
And we were all late for Christmas traffic this morning, so I'm afraid I'm running a bit behind this.
No, that's fine. Thank you for coming. Declarations of interest, have we got today?
None, Chair.
Thank you. Questions by members of the public?
None, Chair.
Thank you. Right, we're on the first item which is introduction to private sector housing.
Thank you.
Please, Simon.
Good evening, everyone. For those who may not know me, my name is Simon Brisk, I'm the private sector housing manager. I'd be happy to give a brief overview of the work that we carry out in the private sector housing team. So. Yeah, okay. So, the team is quite a small team. Primarily, we're an environment health function. We sit within the environment health team, but we were moved some years ago into the housing team. But we are, well, I am a qualified environmental health officer and within the team we have another environmental health officer which is Carla Lithler. We also have private sector housing administration officer, Paula Mackenzie, who's actually very clued up on all environmental health work and private sector housing work, because she's been with us for nearly 20 years, actually it is 20 years, yeah. And we're currently trying to recruit to a new part-time environmental health officer post within the team. Sitting alongside us, we have what we call the Care Repair Agency, that's a home improvement agency. They work alongside us to help to provide the grants that we provide to disabled facilities and the other types of grants, which I'll go through in more detail. This is actually combined agency, it's the Guildford and Waverley Care Repair. Just a brief summary of the different, broadly, the different types of work that we carry out, but I'm going to go through all these in more detail, so I'm going to skip over that. I'm going to go into them now. And the range of people that we deal with is really every type of tenure, early. Owner occupiers, we deal with a lot for the grant side of things, but also we get involved with complaints between two sets of neighbours over various things. Private tenants, which form the majority of our housing complaints and inquiries, obviously, they're the ones that are living in sometimes substandard housing. Housing association tenants also, we get involved with a fair number of complaints about those properties. Landlords we deal with on the other side who ask for our advice on housing standards and particularly with regard to houses in multiple occupation, fire safety, amenities. Travelers, we, well, not only travelers, but caravan sites actually, we regulate caravan sites in terms of provide site licenses and regulate the way they operate. And council tenants, even council tenants will come to us on occasion for an independent assessment of their conditions if they're feeling that their problems are not being resolved through the housing team. But the main area of work, well, one of the main areas of work are housing complaints. And, I mean, it's estimated that about one-third of private rented properties do not meet the housing that the decent housing standards. And there are a large, a large number of problems arising from, obviously, from poor conditions. There's an increasing number of privately rented properties. I mean, the private rental sector has estimated that it's doubled over the last 10 to 12 years. So there are, we notice a lot, a lot more people coming to us and as far as housing complaints are concerned, there has been a dramatic increase in the number of complaints that we get over the last, certainly since about five years ago, has increased to a large, a large extent. Main areas that we deal with are damper mould complaints and just problems with excess cold because either because the boilers stop working or just poor insulation or it's just inadequate heating. We're getting a lot of other issues as well that we deal with. Obviously, fire safety features very, very high on our agenda. Dangerous electrics, risks of falling from downstairs or from, from levels are unsafe. We've got a case on at the moment where we're dealing with a sort of a barrier to a very steep drop down, from a high level outside. The barrier was damaged by a car and we're involved in making sure that the owners of the building reinstates the barrier in case people drop off the edge. Wouldn't want that. Overcrowding, that's more and more prevalent these days as people can't afford necessarily to the rent levels and they have a tendency to either themselves sort of group together or else it can be the landlord seeks to just to increase the rent by maximising the rooms within the property. And so we deal with these complaints. They can range from simply giving advice over the phone about standards to be achieved or advice about the tenure and the risk of being evicted to carrying out full house assessments using what's called the Housing Health and Safety Rating System, whereby we look at a whole range of hazards under the Housing Act and determine whether the property is in a serious condition which warrants the council taking, by having a duty in fact to take action on the owner to make sure the property's brought up to standards. We've a range, range of enforcement powers under the Housing Act. We have some improvement notices to require improvements, obviously, prohibition orders where it's simply property needs to be vacated until it's safe to occupy. Emergency powers, we have demolition orders in extreme circumstances, management orders where we can actually take over management of properties. There's a range of other powers that we have, including a payment notice under the Environmental Protection Act. Spoken cover not science regulations came in recently there in November 2015, which we now, is an extra piece of legislation which we can use to make sure that certain standards are brought up. And there's more legislation on the way. Legal evictions and harassment, unfortunately, this, this is on the increase as well, these threats of eviction. So we try to make sure that the landlord is aware of the proper procedure so that the eviction doesn't take place, doesn't happen in the first place, or at least is carried out properly. We also have powers to, in cases where perhaps the electrics have been turned off or water disconnected, we have the power to reinstate the services and we have the power to dispute. Houses in multiple occupation, there's a standard, well, there's a whole range of different types really, ranging from the traditional types where you have bedsticks with cooking facilities in each room. Mostly what we have in, where they are shared houses and conversions of large houses into, well, into, into rooms. The larger ones need to be licensed, or at least the owners need to apply for a licence from the local authority. And when they say the larger ones, that means houses or HMOs, houses modification, which have got three or more stories and five or more occupiers. We, obviously, we charge for this and we regulate those, those properties as a priority for current inspections. We've licensed 40, actually, we've licensed more than 40 HMOs in Waverley, but some have gone back into single occupation or into, into flats. And we set conditions on the maximum number of occupiers and obviously fire courses and amenities and we, we have come across some horrendous conditions in the ones that we, we have been looking at. But licensing for HMOs is, we understand is due to change in that the requirements for, what's going to change is that the reference to number of stories is going to be removed so that any HMO with five or more people occupying it will need to be licensed. We thought that's going to happen this year, didn't, and now we're expecting it to take, take force in April next year. So we'll wait and see. I mentioned caravan sites, so these aren't just traveller sites, all caravan sites with funding permission, apart from certain extensions, need to be licensed by the local authority and this allows us to set conditions with regards to, again, fire safety, health and safety, drainage issues. So we've, we've 39 current licensed sites, but most of those are single, single caravans, but we have, well, we have four large non-traveller mobile home sites in Waverley and of course we have quite a few traveller sites as well. Premises causing nuisance, well, this, this covers a whole range really. So we may, we have problems with one property causing nuisance to a neighbouring property. We had a case where there was an empty house where the roof, because of the fire, the roof had disappeared or partially and that was, it was a semi-detached house, so that was allowing the rain to penetrate into the next door property. So we served an abatement notice and the owner didn't respond, so we took work in, carried out work in support to reinstate the roof to abate the nuisance and we've placed, well, we placed a charge on the, on the property which we subsequently reclaimed from the owner. Boarding, I'm sure many of you will have seen a series of programmes about the people who hoard rubbish and create the problem. I don't really need to go into it, it's just that there are some horrendous sites we've come across where you have literally just channels to walk through because of everything else. And empty properties, we have powers to, certainly, something we do quite often, what we have to do is to secure empty properties from entry, from, people trying to gain entry and occupy them, but we have a range of powers to deal with empty homes. What the hell, funerals? Council has a duty to take action, to arrange, make funeral arrangements where there's nobody else that's going to do it. We're literally the last resort. When we do this, we have first claim to the estates of the RIS1, actually, quite often RIS. It's just that there's nobody, literally nobody is, is prepared to make funeral arrangements. So we will do this and we will then, obviously, the funeral will take place, but we'll try as far as possible to obtain some sort of funding from the estates. If there's a property, that's fine, but if there's no property, then we, it may be a case of trying to reclaim valuables and sell them. We, we didn't used to do that many, we used to do about three a year up until two years ago and then suddenly, these are escalators as well, we did, we did seven last year, but to 10 the year before. Unprecedented. Grants then, it's final, final few slides on grants, I'm going to go into grants in more detail in a moment. Disabled facilities grants, these are, obviously, are for adaptations to properties to enable disabled people to live more comfortably. Whole range of works that we carry out, mostly bathroom adaptations, there's taken that to bathroom, putting the level excess shower, stairlifts are very common. Ramps, rails, kitchen adaptations, but it can, in certain cases, can actually require an extension to be built to revive ground floor facilities. So maybe just a bathroom downstairs or it may even be a bedroom and a bathroom. So we, these grants are available to owner occupiers, private and housing association tenants, and, I mean, landlords can apply on behalf of their tenants as well, that's very, very rare. There's a means test involved, so that, let's see, it's a, grants available to people on low income, limited savings. And there is a mandatory £30,000 limit. We have now got authority to, to provide discretionary amounts above the £30,000 limit. Obviously, when you've got an extension, it's going to cost more than £30,000, so the money's going from somewhere. We do about 40 grants a year and the funding, well, I go into the funding in a moment, I think. The primary effect of this is to, is to obviously keep people living comfortably in their home and to reduce hospital and care home emissions and also reduces care packages for people in needless visits from social services. We also have our own discretionary grants, which we call the State of Morning Grant and we use this currently to provide mainly works for energy efficiency, so replacing boilers broken down, concrete insulation, also do home security works, also do replacement windows when they're presenting a hazard. And these are available to people who are disabled mentally or simply on a very low income, which means that they receive an income related benefit. We currently have a £5,000 maximum of grants and we apply a 10-year repayment condition. And we currently do about 15 grants a year which equates to about £30,000, a net payment of £30,000. And finally, we, I mentioned it before, our Home Improvement Agency is a joint agency we operate with Guildford. Funded currently by Surrey County Council, well, primarily by Surrey County Council, but also they apply fee to each grant that we approve and works carried out. There is a fee which goes to the agency to help, help also fund their work. However, the funding from Surrey County Council is, well, so under threat, it's actually, it is going to reduce as from next year. But they deal with most of our grants, probably at least most of our disabled facilities grants, they do about 90% of those and they do a fair number of other grants as well. And, yeah, I think that's probably probably the best to leave there, unless you have any questions.
Simon, thank you very much indeed, most interesting. Yes, Tony.
May I throw your ask?
Yes, please, really.
Thank you very much. I first came across your department when someone on my patch was in trouble. Now, they were in trouble because they were on the housing list, but they were in private accommodation.
Yes.
Now, at the time, being somewhat naive, I assumed everyone in private accommodation would go to a solicitor to sort their problems out, you see. Yes, I'm pushing the law. But, but, so we have this sort of department which is actually moving into that area, aren't you?
Well, we, we've always been there.
Yes.
It's just simply that people haven't been maybe aware of us.
They are not aware of you, actually.
No.
And I, my first reaction was to send them to the CAB, as they go to them, and presumably you work with them because they, they must be the experts on a lot of these problems, dealing with landlords or on that.
Well, we, we certainly work alongside them and they are, I think they get a lot of the inquiries from tenants to do with their security of tenure. We also get inquiries of the same sort, so we're kind of working independently of each other, to be honest, a lot of the time, because obviously they're in a separate building. But we, we deal with, yeah, we've, we've had these powers, these powers have been in place since, well, the 1920s really.
I mean, it's obvious if, if you were here and I, when I was younger and that, I would have gone to you about an argument between me and a neighbour rather than an expensive group down the road.
Well, there is a mediation service.
Yes, or whatever, but all that, and, and you've really kept yourselves rather under the basket. And I think this is something we should really make much more of because it's brilliant work.
We certainly should be, people should certainly be aware of us in terms of, I would say, for tenants who have got problems with where they're living and they need help and the landlord's not doing something. That's really the key area where we need to, I think, promote our work.
Anybody else have any more questions? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
Then yes.
Thank you. You probably don't get these cases very often, if at all. It'd be interesting to know if student accommodation at the formal end of the spectrum like a board residence, I don't know whether we have any at Farnham, but.
Yeah, there is one, yes.
Okay, and also we've got a huge number of pupils in boarding school dormitories within the borough as well. Do they fall within your jurisdiction? Not where any complaints are rising, but it's just useful to know, should they?
There, there's actually an exemption from the definition of a house in multiple occupation. And educational establishments and residential buildings for educational establishments are one of the exemptions. So halls of residences and boarding places are actually exempt from the definition of a house in multiple occupation. Doesn't mean to say that if there's a, a dangerous, if the living conditions are, there's a serious risk there from whatever, that we, we can't get involved. But we don't regulate them as houses in multiple occupation.
Thank you. Liz.
I just wanted to ask you, you mentioned that the Surrey County Council funding was reducing next year and I just wondered where that's the place or where that might be coming from.
Well, I'm glad you asked for that. I was going to come on to it in the next presentation.
No, it's in the next report.
If you don't mind.
No, that's, that's fine. No, 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 that's too fine.
A little less, one little bit. Is it tied up for two presents? Yes, certainly. So am I.
Could I ask, how often do we actually prosecute and go to court? But it seems to me when, when we do, it's a great opportunity of getting some good publicity for how we're supporting the underdog.
Indeed?
Yeah, yeah. Not so often. We, our, our process is, well, initially informally to try and get things resolved. If not, then we serve formal notice. That will usually sorts the problem out. I've, I've been to court twice to deal with, actually to prosecute.
And how many have you been here, Simon?
Do you? It's a quickie.
It's a good question.
You, you had one of your slides that it means tested and £30,000. Is that £30,000 income a year or assets worth £30,000?
No, no, the £30,000 was the maximum amount of grant that we would provide, I'm sorry.
Oh, I see. Well, that wasn't clear on your slide.
Sorry, yeah.
I see. Right.
There isn't a maximum threshold as such for, for savings for, I'd say, to, to, to so.
Right, okay. No, I understand.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Chair, if I could just make the connection between what we normally talk about as our landlord function and we care about the quality of the living environment we have for our tenants, making sure the places are well repaired, the people are overcrowded. This is part of our housing supply, what's available in the private sector, and it particularly joins up with the item on the agenda about homelessness because when people present with housing need, there are options. They could join the housing register, but often it would take many years before they have any chance of bidding successfully for a property. So the private sector is a fundamental part of our housing supply and Simon and his team helps to make sure that that supply is fit for purpose and that we're placing our, our local residents in places that are safe.
Simon, thank you. That was really, really very interesting. And I think you're taking us to the next item.
I am, yes. So the next item is the Home Improvement Policy, which is the formal document which sets out the way in which we provide financial assistance for people to improve their homes, either for disabled adaptations, as I mentioned before, or, or home improvements of various kinds. So we have a, currently have our Home Improvement Policy in place, well, we had a policy since 2003, it's a, it's a formal, it's a legal requirement to have one. We revised it in 2013, but we are now proposing to, to change things. And really, this is wrapped up with the funding arrangements essentially. So up until three years ago, we would get a government grant and it's usually around £250,000 to go towards the cost of our, our work for adaptations. And then we, and that wouldn't be enough, because we would normally spend around £400,000 per year. So the council would provide the remainder of the funding to pay for the works because these grants are mandatory and we have to provide disabled facilities grants. And then three years ago, this source of funding changed from the DCLG to Department of Health. The name changed to Better Care Fund. And the emphasis changed in that the works that we now should be doing under our, our policy should be geared to, to meet the aims of the CARE Act, which is to promote independence, reduce hospital emissions, reduce care home packages, try to speed up returns from hospital, all those things, certainly to improve independence and try to keep people, people safe and warm in their homes so they don't fall, they don't, don't have cardiovascular diseases or from arthritis, pneumonia and all those, those, those range of things which creates problems in our health service. The funding increased, has increased dramatically, rather unusually. We're in a situation where we've got more money than we're actually spending. So that's, our fund for this year, 2017-18, is in the region of £640,000, I haven't got these that big of numbers, it's that sort of level. And strangely, our, our spending has, has gone, actually gone down slightly. It was around £300,000 last year. And we're not unusual, we're not alone in this, this is something, it's all local authorities, nearly all local authorities are experiencing in that this Better Care Fund provision has risen up so much that it's kind of exceeded what councils are able to provide in terms of their grant assistance. So within Surrey, we got together, Surrey County and the Surrey authorities and we commissioned a report from the agency for foundations who are the sort of the national body for the home improvement agencies and they work entirely on, on grants and they're also able to, so they're able to carry out research to provide some recommendations on how, what sort of things we should be looking at, not only to improve the way we help people financially for adaptations and improvements, but also to deal with this threat of the reduction in funding on our Home Improvement Agency. So they produced a report, we looked at it and we've tried to incorporate the recommendations in this revised policy. Done a, a pretty comparison of what we're doing at the moment and what we're proposing to do in a new policy. do in a new policy. We have already made some changes, I should mention, to our process for dealing with grant inquiries, just to try and speed up the process for people, because it's quite a long, can be quite a long, complicated process, unfortunately, or has been, for experience by grant applicants, not only because of what we do, in fact, not so much because of what we do, actually, in many cases, it's because of holdups within social services, because part of the process for these grants is that we need to get a report from an occupational therapist, because they're health experts, they can recommend what works are needed for the particular resident. And that can take some time, waiting for a report from social services. So what we've done now is, we've tried as far as possible to use private O Ts, occupational therapists, because that is much quicker, and we can pay for that within the grants, so that's fine, the money's there anyway, we know this. It's, having this extra funding enables us to actually speed up the process for people. We're also, as I mentioned before, we're also able to approve discretionary amounts above the thirty thousand pound maximum limit, which can, obviously can help for those situations where it's needed. So while I'm proposing within the D F G, if I say D F G, sorry, it's just our acronym we always use for disabled facilities grants. Not many, not really many changes that we're not already doing, it's just that means testing for stairlifts ramps, rails and steps and hoists, these are minor items, but they're so simple to do, and they can make such a difference. What we're proposing, as a consequence of the recommendation in the foundations report, is to remove the means test for them, so that we can just, if somebody needs a stairlift or a ramp, we can just go ahead and get it done. Ultimately, obviously, we're going to, we'll be paying for the work instead of the clients, but it can mean the difference between somebody having the fall and then having to go to hospital and actually, they break the hip, it's actually going to cost, average cost is about twenty five thousand pounds, so it makes sense, really. So that's what we're proposing for the D F G side. A safe and warm grant, which we administer, the number of changes we're proposing, we're proposing to extend the work that we do under the grants, we didn't include initially rewiring, I'm not sure why, so we're going to include that, asbestos removal, where it's needed, only where it's absolutely essential. Hoarding, we need to deal with, offering assistance to actually remove stuff, because there can be a death trap. But also, not mentioned here, but also looking to deal with situations of dampness and also flooding, which can be obviously an issue in the, it can be in the winter, so we're proposing to include that. Some of these works can be more expensive than the maximum we have at the moment, so proposing to increase the maximum grant of ten thousand pounds. I've mentioned before that we used to pay for safe and warm grants through our own budget, but now that these works, which are essentially all to do with keeping people safe in their homes, we've now agreed with our finance team that we will use the Better Care Fund to pay for works that we carry out onto the safe and warm grants. So these were also, the money is coming from there and not from Waverley's own capital budget. Extending the benefits for eligibility for the grants, obviously, universal credits is coming in, we didn't include working tax credit originally. We have currently a resident's superiors of three years, that you have to occupy the property for three years before you're eligible for grants. In fact, that's unnecessarily restrictive, so we're proposing to reduce it to one year. Those are the changes for, under the safe and warm grants. We're proposing two more types of assistance. One is a relocation grant. Essentially, we just very occasionally come across properties which are really too expensive to adapt for disabled residents, although it was just impossible, can be almost entirely impossible to do. So what we're proposing is to, under a discretionary policy, to have a grant to enable people to move somewhere that's more suitable and ease, more easily adapted, so that essentially is the cost involved with relocating, so obviously illegal fees, state agents, and natural moving costs. There's a backup here, not, I didn't put on to this comparison sheet, where that's any follow-up disabled facilities grants, if it's within Waverley, will be up to a maximum of twenty thousand, so that it meets the thirty thousand pound criteria. So the idea is that they were moved to somewhere that is actually more suitable and easily adapted. And then finally, what's called the prevention grants, again, comes from the foundations' recommendations, simple, low-cost works, this is all to do with, well, all to do, but a lot of it is to do with returning home from hospital, just minor stuff, putting in key safes, carrying out home safety checks, just minor adaptations, to enable somebody to come out and split back into their home, make sure the heating's working properly, so it may involve some minor repairs to the heating, maximum five thousand pounds. This is, all to do is getting elderly and disabled people back in the home, no means test, and no, basically no paperwork, really, it's all to do is speed. And that's essentially it, obviously the full detail is in the policy which you have before you, but that's just a quick run through.
Simon, thank you very much indeed. I found it very interesting that you were now using private occupational therapists. When I first sat on the Housing Committee, all those years ago, we had problems getting O Ts to actually go and assess the needs. So I'm delighted to hear you're getting on with it, because as you know, one of the things I hate is when we agree something and we don't do it quickly. So what you had to say, I found very encouraging, to say the least, thank you. Tony.
Thank you, you touched on a very interesting point, and I wonder if you could be even more synthetic? And let me explain, it's this downsizing. Now, people become disabled with greater age, of course, and there is a need for getting people out of these big houses into smaller ones. But at the moment, they're going to be faced with having to live there a year before you can help. And I'm wondering if we could, you can see where I'm coming from on this, it would be a great boost to the housing market and that, if we could speed that up somewhere.
Well, I would have thought the one-year thing won't really be an issue for them, because if they've been living in a property which they need to downsize from, they've probably been there for some time.
No, no, they are thinking of downsizing.
Yes.
And they see a small place, but they, it might be unsuitable, because they're in a wheelchair or something. And they've got this problem that somehow they want to move down to a smaller, more convenient place, but they've got to live there for twelve months before they.
That's not what the requirement, there's no requirement as to how long they live in the property they move to, the requirement.
Oh, this is a residential.
Is to do with how long they live in the property, yes, that's right.
Right, now, I thought it was the property that you were going to apply the grant to.
But it is an idea, though, I mean, I haven't thought of including downsizing within it, but I'm amenable to including that if people want to do that.
Well, it would certainly help the general housing market, because in Waverley and Godling, there's a certain shortages of these big houses, because our people are stuck, because they, you know, the family have gone, the grandchildren have gone, and they rattle around.
But you can't force people to downsize.
But this is a helping hand, this is a brilliant idea.
I think it's something perhaps the department could think about at some stage.
There's more pressing needs, personally.
Sorry, Cal, did you want to?
No, sorry, I was just speaking with the Madam Chair, and I was very rude to me. I was just saying, I think there's more pressing needs at the moment than helping people to downsize.
Anybody else? Yes, Richard?
Thank you, Jim. I'm sort of apologising in advance for bringing this up, because it's not to do with the substance of the policy, I think it's really well-written and the content is really good. It's just a process we go through to getting policies in front of the council. I would have appreciated the opportunity to just sit down with colleagues who wish to be there in advance of it coming to us, because we don't have time to kick around the lesser items, you see what I mean, in these meetings, otherwise they end up going on as long as last night, so unless meeting went on.
This isn't going on now.
It's not, I'll be brief, it would be nice if we could have the opportunity for meetings for those who wish to attend. So I'll go very quickly through the less substantive, four less substantive issues very quickly. Firstly, there's no version number to this, but this is about the, you've said it's about the third or fourth version of the policy.
This will be the third policy.
So just in terms of, you know, colleagues having a document on their desk that says it's the policy and thinking it's the current one, it might be helpful. Okay, it's a bee in the bonnet of the Audit Committee on which I'd say to you.
Richard, we do have a date here.
Yeah, we do, and it helps.
So can we sort of, anything like that, can you sort them out with Simon offline?
Yeah, okay. Policy statement on page twenty-three, I'm just wondering about the ordering of it, in that it says Waverley is committed to the provision of grants, et cetera, to enable residents living, et cetera. It seems to me that the most important thing in this policy is the enabling of residents living in the council accommodation to carry on through the provision of grants, and it's just an ordering of the statement. Policy statement, top of page twenty-three.
I don't have numbers. Oh, it's on the, oh, yeah, okay.
It's the policy.
It's literally, it says Waverley is committed to the provision of grants and forms of assistance. It seems to me it might, it might make the point that we're really concerned about the welfare of our residents if we started up with Waverley is committed to enabling residents living in council accommodation in the borough.
Yeah.
Through the provision of the grants, that's all. You can see why I didn't really want to bring this up here, but it's the opportunity.
Well, we've got small presentations tonight, so if you can shorten what you're doing, that would be very, very helpful.
I'm not sure, maybe, yes, that might be an idea to, perhaps we sit down together, or you can email me with your queries.
That would be so helpful.
So just one point, it is a common thread through our policies and procedures, there's nowhere in here about regular reporting back to either senior management or the council about performance. We've got metrics in here, but there's nowhere it actually says how we're going to hear about it on a regular basis as to whether you're doing a good job or not. And that is, that's very relevant, because you just said, you know, you actually underspent this year, so whether we underspend or overspend is good to hear if it's happening and why.
We did used to have regular meetings on capital budgets in previous years, where we would say where we were with how things were going, those seemed to have stopped. I do, within our service, I provide a quarterly report on the work that we do and how things are going and our performance.
So it's in place, just nice to see it in the procedure part of this, so that, you know, when you get promoted, whoever follows on knows that that's the expectation. Do you understand the point?
Yes.
The point is, we want to know how it's all going on a regular.
Richard, you've got some very valid points.
Okay, finished?
No, no, I don't want to dismiss what you have to say, but I think there is another place to say it, but I think also that your general point about policies, and one of the things we did highlight when we were looking at the reorganisation of our structure, when we had the working group two years ago, was that we needed to have these things earlier in order to make our views known, rather than get them, in essence, we were rather stamping it, and that we didn't like, so somehow we've got to address that. Is that all right?
Yes, absolutely, thank you.
Anybody else?
Chair, Simon very helpfully said that as a draft, what's not in there at the moment is issues around tackling damp, which we know for many of our older population, is a sure way of developing serious chest complaints, the pneumonia, maybe up in hospitals, and also the impact of flooding, poor drainage that leads to, in the cause of damp, and it's whether this committee would support the inclusion of those issues in the policy, because they're not in there at the moment, that it's been suggested by Simon, and it's certainly something I would support, that it's part of the criteria that the policy includes.
Do you want to put something like that in the recommendation? Because the recommendation is to adopt the policy, but do we want to say something like, subject to the addition of comments to do with damp and flooding? Then it's not forgotten, because it's in the recommendation.
That would be helpful, yes.
Sorry, Cal, sorry, I keep checking. Simon, are you happy with that?
Yes, yes, it's fine.
So we could do something like that, is that right?
Good idea.
Liz?
Just a point of clarification, thank you, Jim, with Simon, so the six hundred and forty, that comes straight from government, does it now?
Yes, in a kind of roundabout way, but yes. Gets to Surrey, then, and then it comes to us.
And so the funding is still by Surrey County Council, and it's still, the Home Improvement Agency is still, is that still involved? Sorry, I lost the plot there.
Yeah, no, I was going to go, so the six hundred and forty thousand comes from government, and that goes for the actual grant provision, so the actual disabled facilities grants, safe and warm and so on, so the special works. The money for the Home Improvement Agency comes from Surrey at the moment, what they provide this year, sixty-five thousand pounds, which goes for the Waverley elements of the gift from Waverley care repair. So, and in addition to that, the care and repair also paying up around thirty thousand pounds worth of fee income, so that's their income, it's about ninety-five thousand. So what's going to happen in the future, next year, Surrey are proposing to reduce their inputs of their sixty-five thousand by twenty-five percent, and then a further twenty-five percent the year after, carry on year after year, that's what they're intending to do, as we understand. So, and I didn't talk about this, you're right, what we are proposing is to fill the gap with Better Care Fund.
Thank you, and just one other tiny little thing. On the policy, you mentioned about work carried out by builders and that, is there any accreditation or any scheme, or is it any builders that can carry out the work and you, do you inspect or something?
We do, we always inspect the works. The way that the grants work is that the work is contracted by the grant applicants, which normally the owner occupier, or the owner of the property is the person who, in effect, employs the builder. But normally what happens, because we're dealing with vulnerable people, is that we, through our care and repair agency, arrange for tried and trusted contractors. I wouldn't say they're accredited, but they're contractors that we have, we follow up with references, and we've also checked out the works, and in most cases, we've used them many times. So we provide the contractors in most of the cases, and we always carry out the special works.
Thank you. Is that agree, we agreed the recommendation subject to the amendment?
Agreed, agreed.
Thank you very much indeed. We now move on to item seven.
Excuse me, I can show, I'm trying to find my excuse.
Love to talk, please do. I'm sure it's time to go home and fish and chips, wasn't it?
I felt it's right.
Right, thank you. We've now got Andrew and Mike, thanks for doubling up here.
Let's get into the table.
Yes.
Who's to start?
Thank you, Chairman, I'll hand over to Mike to start with, and if he gets it wrong, I'll chip in.
That's encouraging, isn't it?
I was conscious, as this committee was being.
I was conscious, as this committee was being prepared for that, there are a number of presentations. So what I did in preparation for this was to provide quite a detailed report and so I'm just going to do a brief introduction to it. So it's to do with the Homelessness Reduction Act. This is very scary news, not just for Waverley but for all of councils across England. What it's doing is introducing an extra layer of detail that we're going to have to follow up with every housing applicant who approaches us as homeless. We already have a great track record in preventing homelessness, as shown by that table and apologies, it goes over two pages, but our average number of people, homeless households in temporary accommodation, well, the figures at the end of March was one, currently there's no households in temporary accommodation in Waverley, whereas the Surrey average is seventy-five. So we've got a great track record in preventing homelessness. But this legislation will be incredibly challenging for us. So it's very lordly legislation, why governments, and it has got cross-party support and that's the other really important thing to stress, this isn't sort of legislation that's from one party and then if there's a change in government, it's likely to get changed. I don't think, it's cross-party legislation. And what the aim is, I think what a lot of the organisations such as Shelter and Crisis have been aware of is when people have sought homelessness help from councils, the councils have focused their attention on households deemed to be in priority needs, that's families with children, people who are pregnant, people who've got really severe medical problems. And that has meant that those who are also homeless, genuinely homeless through no fault of their own, often don't get a very good deal because we won't have a statutory duty to provide a roof over their head and potentially they can be sleeping rough and because the councils do not have that duty. So why this legislation has come about is so that we provide a very similar level of prevention service to all households. And we do this anyway, we provide a very good service prevention duty, not only to people that have children but also to single people, but this is trying to get a national framework because there's a very variable practice or lack of good practice in certain councils so the government wanted to legislate for this. But it is incredibly challenging. One of our worries with it is the administrative burden because what happens at the moment, we do a lot of work to prevent homelessness and so a homeless application for us is only triggered for those that we can't prevent the homelessness for and that's why our numbers in temporary accommodation are so low because we interact with the private sector so well that we can try and relieve that homelessness. What this will do is it will trigger a homeless application when someone comes through the door, irrespective of whether they've got a connection to Waverley. And that's quite an interesting thing. And it's also increasing the definition of when someone is threatened with homelessness from twenty-eight days to fifty-six days, which again is good because when someone's served notice to leave a private rented tenancy, it's a two-month notice, fifty-six days. So it's trying to encourage people to get advice and help to prevent that homelessness as early as possible. So there's a lot of an administrative burden to this, which the report outlines. In Wales, they've been working to very similar legislation for the last year, couple of years, and they've noticed not only an increase in cases but also the time that you have to be involved with the case. So it is going to be a challenge and the report outlines what that is because I think it's putting new burdens upon us, but in a sense, the housing market is as it is. We still have a very low local housing allowance, it's very hard for us. Whilst we've got a good record in accessing private rented housing, it's becoming increasingly difficult, certainly this year, to enable a homeless household to access private rented accommodation. We've often had to front up six months' rent on behalf of that person, which they then have to pay back to us. Whereas before, we've been able to do one month's rent or two months' rent. So it's a really challenging environment and in a sense, the legislation doesn't change that. There is still frees on the local housing allowance, there's still cuts to supported housing. We're very reliant on supported housing and fortunately, with Surrey County Council's pressures, they're having to cut what they can pay for supported housing. Universal Credit, welfare reform, they're all challenges that make it increasingly difficult for us to prevent homelessness. On the positive, there is some extra new burdens funding, but it is only for a couple of years. As I say, the report outlines, some councils have reacted immediately by saying we're going to need five extra staff, seven extra staff, and these are Surrey boroughs. We have taken the view that we've got a good record in preventing homelessness and rather than just creating posts and then the legislation comes in and we think, oh grief, we've created these posts but we need these posts, we should wait until the legislation is in and then look to see what the burdens are. We think there is going to be a staffing impact, I don't think that's beyond doubt, but we don't want to create a post and then, actually, that's not the right post. We want to actually react in a positive way. And the report outlines that we did tweak the Housing Options Team about six months ago in anticipation that we may have these duties. The report has mentioned about, the key thing is to prevent homelessness. So if we have a tenancy support post, that would be really helpful. And probably not for minoting, but we're actually in discussions with Surrey about potentially using some Surrey funding for that sort of project to be really helpful. We should link in with their cuts, but they might divert money to us for that. So we're in discussions with them on that. So I think that, I'll leave it there and I'll open up to questions really because I think the report's got quite a lot of information and.
Yeah, Mike, you've done a good job, you're quite right in rushing into it.
Yeah.
I think that's really what I was going to say, rather than ask a question, and I don't want to add to your load.
Yeah.
This is so exciting, so changing dynamic that, you know, I would appreciate sort of an ongoing update.
Yeah.
But I don't want report after report, you know, a couple of bullet points will do it because I don't want to add to your load and I think you're doing it exactly the right way, you know, waiting to see. But, you know, we would, I think as members, offer you whatever support you need for this because it is so important. So I thought it was an excellent report and we're glad you were sending it along.
Thank you, Mike, Michael.
Yeah, excellent report and very thorough and very readable. I mean, what worries me more than anything else is the fact that we've been so successful in homelessness, it's going to come and bite us in the performance. Because everyone's going to decide whether Waverley can keep that down and obviously we've got no weight in this, when any of this stuff, we'll all go to Waverley, wherever we happen to come from. Supposedly, we could make it less attractive by then sending all the stains, wasn't it? But I also approve of the pilots that we've been going in for, which seems to me that we're going to be in front of the curve by having involved the pilots. I'm very pleased to see that. But I think the strategy you've developed is the right thing. The government are clearly going to be underfunding this big time by the look of it. We're starting to say, well, the total funding for this is probably going to come under the Navy.
Yes, that's progress the country.
And it is a worry.
It is, yeah, and say it's a worry across the country. And certainly, Peter Kastukovan's point about getting a report back. We are, at this time, just by coincidence, we're doing work on our homelessness strategy. So it's very timely, actually, we can adapt our homelessness strategy. So I will be bringing a report to do with our homelessness strategy in the new year and that will give an update on where we are with this. The government have helpfully published a hundred and seventy-page coded guidance we have to take into account as we, you know, adapt to this. So, yes, so there will be updates and we update on the homelessness strategy each year as well, which will give members a good update as how we're coping with this and, as Simon was saying, more regularly to management board, give performance indicators as well.
Taking the point that Carol made, and that is one of the things, that we do want updates, but we could actually have an item on the agenda that talks about verbal updates and then lists what we want a verbal update on, you know, like this particular one. Would that serve your?
Yes, but I certainly don't want to add to anyone's load and I don't need copious reports. Just any bullet points with information.
Patricia, thank you. Thank you for the report. I think we would all acknowledge, a roof over our heads is of high importance to everybody. I wonder if you could give me a definition of homelessness because there always used to be concerns about people making themselves voluntary homeless. And also, I think we've all seen in the newspapers and on the television reports perhaps more of young, single men who are living in appalling conditions, in a car park or wherever.
Yeah.
We're not going to be able to help homeless people. I read something in the report about specific accommodation for this type of person. Are we going to be able to go into that?
Well, this is the challenge in that what this legislation does, it puts what's called a relief homelessness relief duty. So we have the fifty-six day prevention duty. So this is when someone is not legally homeless and that's, the definition of homelessness is you don't have a legal right to occupy accommodation, so you don't have a tenancy that you can go to or you're being excluded from accommodation, you might be living at home with parents or relatives and they have given you the necessary twenty-eight days' notice to leave and you have no rights to remain there. And so it would include people who would be sleeping rough. So we will have that additional burden to try and interact with all household groups and try and prevent that homelessness, but if we can't do that, we also have the added duty of trying to relieve homelessness. And that's why we're trying to initiate these partnerships with housing providers so that we provide shared accommodation so that that will protect us against the person saying, well, you haven't done anything to help us, we can say, well, here is your option. So we're going to have to have a personalised housing plan for everyone who comes through the door saying that. As long as we're sure they're homeless and they're eligible, we have to create this personalised housing plan saying what we're going to do to help them, but also what their responsibilities are. So it might be saying, we need you to look in the local papers for a private rent, we need you to find out what benefits you're entitled to, but we'll have to engage with every household. It will be very challenging, yeah.
Thank you, Tony.
I see how we deal with homelessness as a measure of our caring and Waverley is one of the top for caring, we're known for that. And the people who live here are happy and we would come out well on that. So all power to your elbow, please. Paragraph eight, which is, given the attractiveness of Waverley, I do understand where you're coming from with that one. The same trouble was with travellers and how we dealt with them. And I think this is something we must be welcoming rather than anything else.
Well, I don't want to go down.
No, I know, I don't want to talk about the travellers.
I want to stick to the agenda.
It's the same thing.
Yeah, just on a point of clarity from our legal position, whilst we have a homeless prevention duty for anyone who comes through the door, whether they've got connection or not, if we then move on to the relief duty, a duty to relieve their homelessness, we are then able to look at the local connection. If there's no connection to Waverley, we can do a referral to where there is a connection. So there is some allowance for that.
That is helpful, yes.
But the time taken to try and prevent their homelessness allows us to try and come up with a solution safe, for argument's sake, they're from Manchester, allows us to try and give them meaningful advice about the options available for them, there are probably more options in Manchester if they've got connections in Manchester. So that's going to be where the challenges are going to be, to try and still provide a meaningful housing action plan for someone that we don't know much about and we don't actually know the area where they've come from. So it's going to be.
Thank you very much, Mike, David.
One of the challenges that Mike's team faces is that we know already, don't we, that there are more people living in our community with mental health issues, with substance misuse issues, some of them are fleeing domestic abuse and they have quite complex needs. And so some of those people struggle to live in mainstream housing and they need some level of support. And one of the challenges I think your team has, and you do a great job with those connections, relationships you have, is access those housing providers to provide their extra support. The challenge this year is that Surrey County Councils, because of the funding pressures they're under, are having to look very hard at their ability to fund some of those organisations going forward. And the government helpfully have just launched a, I think it's a white paper consultation document on how they intend to fund this sort of supported housing in the future. Unfortunately, once the final proposals come forward, that won't happen until 2020. So we have this period at the moment where this provision of this supported housing is on the decline, just at the point that our services and services across Surrey need them even more. And at a time when health and social care are pulling away their support as well. And so we have real concerns about those more vulnerable people living in the community where we're going to increasingly struggle to find appropriate housing for them.
Yeah.
And it's a big focus of our work going forward.
And the trouble is that if it's only a white paper at most, and it can change. And the government are known for changing their mind on it right at the last minute and that does cause a bit of a problem. You wanted to say something, you said?
I did, if you don't mind.
No, not at all.
Just on the IT side.
Yeah.
I noticed that obviously there's a, your current IT system is not fit for purpose and a new IT system will need to be sourced and then you obviously mentioned about the pilot.
Yes, yeah.
Which I presume is meeting that need.
Yes, the early indications are that it is, that it will be good, but we've only had it for like two or three weeks and we're piloting it to help lead it because all the major IT companies, you know, are having to invest a lot into this and to come up with systems that councils can use. I mean, I won't go through the system, but the amount of detail we'll have to provide on everyone who comes through the door to do with their ethnicity, their sexual orientation, the reasons for their homelessness, what actions we've gone, it goes on and on. That's a hundred-page document about the extra information we have to give for every household.
And of.
It's, and so, yeah, going back to the IT, the IT systems should, if they work properly, we put in the details, the applicants, and for the quarterly return to the government, it should just send it to them rather than us having to sort of say, oh, what was that person's situation? So it's gearing up how we work, putting it into the system and it should be automatic if it works correctly.
And with the, obviously with the increased data protection on coming in. And you talked about having an external provider to cover out of hours and would they be then accessing the system as well, the idea is, or how would that work?
Yeah, we would need to, we would need to look at how we interact with the pilot for the out of hours in terms of that. Generally, what can happen is people can come in office hours to us and we say we don't feel we've got a duty to do such and such for you and then they try the luck out of hours, thinking they'll then get the accommodation out of hours. So part of what we do with the out of hours provider is if we know that a customer is likely to be doing that, we can forewarn them, if you like. So when that call comes through, it's, oh, no, we know that you actually went to Waverley earlier this week and the position is such and such, rather than the expense of saying, oh, yes, we're going to put you in temporary accommodation and go back the next working day. So there will be that communication. But you're right, under the new Data Protection Act, when someone comes through the door and gets that advice, we will need to get their permission to what, this is how we're going to use that information. And the IT systems are geared up because obviously they know, the big providers know that this data protection legislation is there, so they'll be geared up for that as well. But, yes, there's lots of challenges.
As long as we make sure that any IT system that we buy in can talk to our other systems.
Yes.
Because we do generally fail on that.
Yeah.
So we need to make sure all of that. Thank you, is anybody else? All right, thank you very much indeed, Andrew, for this report. It's a great report, we have a recommendation, we do need to add to it. And would you request verbal updates from time to time? Is that okay with everyone?
Agreed, yes.
Okay, sounds good, good, thank you very much indeed. Right, we're now onto the Elisa show. Elisa, the presentation?
I do. So the presentation follows on from the Service Plan Midyear Progress Report you've got. So I'm going to try to talk and be light at the same time, so forgive me, I stopped talking. Oh, I have magic assistant, so there we go.
Oh, right, lovely.
So you're aware that all services within the council have an annual service plan. For the housing service, we have five strategic objectives that we wanted to achieve in the year. I'm pleased to say that all five of those are on target. We have the new housing strategy that will be coming to this committee in the new year. We're reviewing the tenancy agreement, again, you've had some early information about that in the previous meeting and that will come back to this meeting again. I'm going to give you a presentation on where we're at with improving customer service. Our objective four is regarding the housing maintenance contract procurement. Again, you've got an update for that in the next time, but just to let you know, we're progressing well. I've been stuck in a room with youngish men for the last two weeks, looking at, there's going to be over seventy selection questionnaires we've been reviewing over the last couple of weeks. So it's been great fun.
I don't wish to know.
And also, we've successfully resettled one Syrian refugee family within the borough. and we're in the progress of identifying a second and some new homes for them. So those are our top five themes for you. So moving on to the presentation, this has given you an update on the housing services customer service projects. As I said, we have a service plan, objective to improve customer service, and that was split into five different areas. To identify key areas, we could deliver services online, to create workflow and forms, online forms for those services, to make sure we tell our tenants about the services that we're delivering online, look at implementing new telephone handling system and also increase our texting systems. So the progress we've made so far, we've identified eight areas where we think we can do transactions online for customers. Four of those forms are already online and six of them are in testing. So tenants can now go online at all residents and apply for a council garage. The forms are much easier to use. They're mobile responsive, which I believe means you can do it on a computer, a laptop, a tablet or a mobile phone. And we really looked at the language we're using to make it much more customer focused and.
That's very good news.
The second stage of looking at what we can deliver online, the website is looking at online forms, but we're also looking at a digital platform which will let people look at the services, look at the progress of the case that they've made. So the first thing we're looking at is putting rent accounts online. So tenants will be able to look at their balance, look how much their weekly rent is and look what payments they've made. We want to do this to meet tenants' expectations. You shouldn't have to phone up to find out what your rent balance is. You shouldn't have to phone up to find out how much rent you owe. It will assist us with avoidable contacts. It would be something that people can look at at midnight when they're watching Coronation Street and have a quick check. And it will deliver value for money for us. So as I said, phase one is to look at rent accounts. And then moving forward, next year, we'll be looking at what we can do about repairs. You can request a repair online at the moment, but you then don't know what happens to it. And what we want to be able to say is, this is when somebody's coming out, the decision has to be made about it. This is when the works are due to be completed. So it's about giving more information to people.
Can I stop you there, Elisa? Because this leads me very nicely into a part of our system called Agresso. And it's to do with repairs. What are we doing about it? Because it seems to be down the bottom of the pile as far as finance is concerned.
Yes, for Orchard, I'm sure when we are at the planning of the implementation stage.
When?
So we are hoping that it will be within December, at the latest.
Which year?
This year, too.
You're absolutely sure? So that when we actually, because at the moment, as I understand it, with the Agresso system that we've got for maintenance, for repairs, at the moment, we've got a whole load of it which is live. But what we don't know is how much money we've got tied up. Because we've got orders which are on the system but are not on Agresso. So we could be building up a problem of, say, five hundred thousand. That was how we started the report on the housing maintenance service. And, you know, we still know further about getting Agresso sorted out. Sorry to be difficult about it, but it's very dear to my heart. Because I want to know what we owe to our maintenance people. And we need to be able to only enter things once. Because at the moment, we enter them twice, as I understand. Is that correct, Elisa?
The Orchard Agresso interface is to reduce the duplication. What currently happens is orders raised in Orchard and the works are approved and signed off and the invoices agreed in Orchard. And then the invoices go into the Agresso system and somebody has to sit through and authorise that invoice again. So the idea is that Orchard becomes the main system for signing off the works and the invoices for the housing staff. And then that information is interfaced with Agresso and then that comes as one report for Hugh or similar to agree those payments.
Elisa, thank you for that, because this is very important, because it does mean we can save money. And at the moment, we have a very difficult situation financially as a council. And we really have got to do this quickly. So when we have our next committee meeting, that will be on the agenda as an agenda item. So we can see what exactly we've got done. And I would welcome you back, Walter, to explain it to us.
Thank you, Tony.
It's just, it's very dear to my heart, this one, because we have an opportunity to be more efficient and we're not being, because we've not done it. Thank you, Elisa. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Okay.
I didn't see it mentioned, Elisa.
No. The third point was about publicity. So Adrian will concur that I went along to the All Tenants Open Meeting in July and waved my digital platform presentation about what would you like to do? You know, world's changing. What do you do online already? Your shopping, your gossip? What do you contact your relatives? So we had quite a good meeting, met some residents and took some views and had two tenants who volunteered to come forward and test any digital platform and online services we have in the future. So that was really useful. We've advertised things within the tenants' newsletter in the summer about it's easier online, these are the things you can do. And we also give information to new tenants when they're out of the tenancy and periodically any other contacts. If we're signposting people or helping them sort of make an application for something, we'll say, you can do this online, we can help you do that. Telephones, it's been very exciting, if you're a little bit dull like her. But we've implemented a system called UC Analytics. So now we can see unrealised information, and this is a little photo I took on Monday afternoon. We can monitor calls live. We can see how many agents are logged in. So that's how many customer service team officers are working, how many calls are waiting, how many calls have been answered, how many calls we've missed and the duration of the calls as well. So over the last year, we've had a significant improvement in the way we're dealing with calls. You know, it was abysmal and everybody was very unhappy about the fact that we were losing eleven percent of calls last year. That's now down to below three percent and three percent is our target and we're continuing to look to improve that. And it's given the customer service manager the opportunity to really focus on the quality of the calls. She can look at how long it's taken different operatives to deal with acquiring, how many they're doing a day. So you might have somebody who's dealing with a hundred calls a day, well, maybe not a hundred. Thirty calls a day and spending a minute and a half. And another operative might be doing fifteen calls a day but spending five minutes. And she's then able to drill down and see what's the quality of our response. Did that three minute call mean that that person didn't call us back twice to find out what's happening? And really given us information to do now.
It's exciting.
Thank you. I know you've been here a long time.
Just that, it's not only used as a management tool, it's a cultural tool as well. And staff are that responding positively and do monitor themselves and do worry if they're not performing. So it's a too, too sort of problematic approach. Sorry.
Thank you. And texting, this has been around for probably the last ten, fifteen years. And it's something we've kind of periodically put our toe in the water about and then pulled out because it was a bit difficult. But we've worked, our customer service manager has worked really well with our contractor to actually get their texting service up and running. So now for responsive repairs, we've got your phone number and we're doing work to make sure that we've got accurate mobile phone numbers every time we take a call. You'll get a text the day before to remind you that somebody's coming out. You get a text on the day before to say the estimated time of arrival. And I'll give you a little example of here. I'm on my way, I'll be with you in a moment. And also a text when the work's completed. Our rent team have been using texting. We've had some issues, we've resolved those. So now we have an automated system that if somebody's missed a rent payment, they automatically let a text message saying, whoops, you've missed your, well, we don't say whoops, but you've missed your rent payment. And also direct debits. I mean, direct debit is something that happens with the bank. You might not necessarily know that you've missed it unless we send you a message. And we also have a system called Red Oxygen, which I think I mentioned at the last meeting, where we can send bespoke messages. So as well as saying that you've missed your payment, we can actually send an individual text saying, we had an agreement that you would pay twenty pounds this week. I noticed that it's not come through yet and things like that. And then together with all this, all the improvements we've been making, we reviewed the staffing structure we have in housing to make sure that we're able to focus on the key elements to continue with improving customer service. So earlier in the year, we looked at the housing structure and looked at different ways we could deliver our services. So we wanted to build on the improvements we've made. We wanted a structure that supports this customer focus. We wanted to strengthen the corporate vision of streamlined customer service, continue to ensure that we're delivering value for money and quality service delivery and develop and maintain our housing IT systems to enable us to do those improvements. So really quick, a few stats for you. Over the last year, we've seen a significant reduction in the number of calls received by the customer service team. This is in part due to the system we've got in place to help deal with calls. Also the fact that we are, they've got a bit more capacity to actually take calls comprehensively and not reorder works or have to deal with people chasing up works. All the works we've done with MERS, our contractors, to improve diagnosis, to get people out in time to do the repair. That's all seen a reduction in the number of calls we've received. In turn, we've seen a fall in the number of jobs because we are making sure we're getting the right information at that first call. We're doing the right job, we're not getting called back to do a second job. The work we've done with MERS, we've really reduced the average time taken for a responsive repair to be completed from thirty days down to under ten. And that's below the contract target as well. And because of all this good work, naturally, as we've mentioned here before, we're getting a fall in the number of complaints as well. So that's all good news. So the drivers for the restructure, as we've mentioned, the objective, but the drivers were to continue to deliver excellent customer service for our tenants and to work smarter by using IT and also to empower staff to resolve issues and take ownership of cases. So earlier in the year, we split the property services team into, in layman's language, I would call a property asset team and a people team. Although they're still doing work on properties, they've got more of a focus about the customers. And then that's led to the restructure of the operations team. So the pink logs you see are new posts that we've got within the team. So we've had a restructure, taken out another tier of managers and introduced a senior inspector and a special projects coordinator. Within the customer service team, this is really, because of the work we've done with the customer service team or the way we're dealing with calls or the way we're monitoring calls, that's given added capacity. And we're moving our tenancy and estates coordinators, who are the people who provide the admin and telephone support for our tenancy and estates team, into the customer service team. So that gives tenants one call, whether it's a housing management or a housing management, a management or maintenance issue, they'll have one person who'll be able to deal with that. And it's the first phase of us looking at delivering a housing-wide customer service team. We've reviewed the surveyors. The structure reflects the current workflows we've got, but we've also built in flexibility. So if we do more programmes in the future, we'll be able to increase that team. There's been a change with the responsive repairs and voids team, so we're losing one inspector and splitting two void officers into a void officer and a void coordinator. This will really help us to continue to drive that continuous improvement on relays by having somebody office-based managing the whole of the void. We've spoken before about the void events in Orchard, making sure all that detail is in there so we can continually drill down and look at what we're doing. Within the tenancy and estates team, we're creating a new team leader post to add capacity to the team. We've mentioned already about the withdrawal of support from mental health services and social services. And we've found that our tenancy and estates manager, Rachel White, is spending a lot of time dealing with complex cases, a lot of safeguarding, a lot of police work. And this will give the team more capacity to manage their online, on-the-ground staff and give Rachel that strategic time and that time to deal with those complex cases and do partnership working as well. Within the development team, just a small change, they're going from having a part-time support officer to their own team-based support officer. And that's hopefully going to be in role where we'll be able to grow somebody and develop them within the housing development team and give them opportunities for the future. And within my own team, we're losing our quality assurance service improvement officer to focus our resources on systems and IT. That's the best way we can support the housing service as a whole, to make sure we've got that capacity to do that. Because there's been, because of all the work we've done about improving customer services, reducing complaints, there's not a business case at the moment for that review struggle. So the next steps I offer is to implement the restructure. We've finished the consultation period with members of staff and we've started the redeployment process. So over the next two to three weeks, we will be clear on who's been offered what roles and then plans will be put in place to make sure that the restructure can start in earnest in January two thousand and eighteen. We'll continue with the testing of the online forms and launch the phase two forms. We've got the testing of the rent account. We're hoping that will go live in January eighteen as well. And we'll publicise that in the next edition of Waverley Homes and People. We've got a tenancy and estate case management system which will run through our Orchard system to help manage tenancy and estates caseload, easily identifiable, what they're working on, how they're progressing and when cases are closed. And that will help us report to you on their workload. So we've continued to develop the digital platform. Once we've got the rent account system worked out, we'll then move on to repairs and other areas where we can help people self-serve and not have to contact us. And we'll further develop texting services and continuous ongoing monitoring of how we're delivering services, what we can do to improve and where we think IT can support that. That was the end of the presentation.
That's very impressive, Elisa. Thank you very much indeed. What do you do about people who don't have access to computers?
We will continue as usual with people who don't have access to computers. This is an additional resource for us to deliver. We are well aware that we do have people who don't have access. However, a lot of people have access via their mobile phones now. When some of our younger tenants who are signing up have the expectation that they would be able to do things online. We're not, we're not in the Richmond Housing Partnership Trust where we're going to force everybody to go online. It's an added, an added service area for people.
Chair, the great, the great advantage, I think, is that it means that our staff can be freed up to support the people who really need the support and people who can help themselves can help themselves.
I think it's good. It's very imaginative. Michael?
Yes, brilliant. I mean, a supplemental to the chairman's question. I mean, what percentage of our customers who, like, are totally frightened of IT in any form and therefore rely on telephone and chat rather than tablets and computers?
I do have a figure. I don't have it in my head, unfortunately, but.
Is it fifteen to eighty-five who've got access?
Something like that, generally, yes. I say, yeah, no more than twenty percent don't have any access.
I suppose access is one thing, air to use it as an other.
Yes, and that's what I, we will support people, say, well, you're aware, you could have done it this way. And what the tenancy and estates team will be able to do is help people with their own iPads in their homes do that. So it's not, it's not like universal credit, you don't have to do it. It's an added option for people, yeah.
Anybody else? Thank you. I'm going to put the recommendation, but I'd like to put another recommendation with it. If Ian gets lectured after, I start changing the recommendations. I will put in a recommendation to the executive that the Orchard Agresso interface, I'm not going to let this go, is expedited as a matter of high priority. And this will figure out staff time and funding. So if you're in agreement, I would like to add that, you will monitor how far we've settled yet or making sure it happens. We've really got to force this one because it's been on the cards now for over a year. And we've still done nothing about it. We agree? You can refuse, but thank you. Thank you all very much indeed. Can we now move on to the Housing Service Performance Management Report, quarter two? This is your annual meeting as well?
Yes, maybe a different seat while we're moving on. So this is your routine performance report with some added information to make it even more exciting this year. So as you're aware, we have nine performance indicators that are presented to you quarterly. I'd like to thank Professor Seagrove for his comments earlier today. For just to clarify a few things. But the good news is that only one of the indicators didn't meet target this time. And that was the rent collection target. If you recall, we had the same issue with this in quarter one. And it's one of those converse things where we've been really proactive in collecting rent in advance. So therefore the figure for rent collection doesn't quite tell you. But if you can see on page fifty-four, paragraph eleven, we've actually got three thousand and six hundred tenants who are in credit with their rent. And that's with a bit of rounding up, six hundred thousand pounds we have in credit on the rent accounts. So potentially you may wish to consider having another indicator as well as the rent collection, such as the rent arrears, so you can get a broader picture. Or I'm happy to bring that detail each time as an added bit of information. Rent collection is very important because obviously without the rent, we couldn't deliver any of the services. And within Annex Two, there's a paper about universal credit. This is a real risk for our rent roll. So the government's rolling out universal credits across the country. We're due to expect it in July 2018. At the moment, only new working age, single people have been given universal credit. On one hand, it's a really good idea because it's all online application, so it reduces the transaction cost of dealing with it. It's giving people their benefit payments in one sum, so it's much more like being in work and you've got to manage your money. However, in the pilots that have been run, seventy to ninety percent of tenants have been in rent arrears when they've had universal credit. At the moment, forty-five percent of our rent comes direct from heads of benefit. So you don't need to be a mathematician, and I'm not a mathematician, to realise that there's some risks for us. So the rent accounts manager has done quite a bit of work to look at the risks and look how we can mitigate universal credit. And the potential that we may lose some of that rent income. So the paper gives you quite a lot of information. The crux of it is, for us to mitigate universal credit, we believe we'd either need to invest in two more officers to do rent account chasing, rent arrears chasing. Or look at technology that's out there. And there's a system called RentSense, which uses analytics to look at people's payment patterns and trends. And identify much earlier when we think there's going to be a missed payment. At the moment, our Orchard system only flags up when somebody's in arrears, not, doesn't predict when they think they might fall into arrears. So that's something we would like the committee to support on it if they felt that that was useful information. The other work we're doing is continuing to work with Waverley Citizens Advice to make sure we're signposting, people are getting the right support. And there's a real drive from us to let everybody know that your rent is the first payment you should make when you get paid. Whether you get paid from your employer or through universal credit. So as you may be aware, historically, we've gradually increased direct debit dates to help people manage their payments, whether they're paid monthly, fortnightly, weekly. What we're looking at is to increase that even further to either every day or every other day, direct debit payments. So we can help people set up that payment the day or the day after they get paid. Because if they wait too weak, the risk is that it's disappeared. So that's the information about universal credit. Also, within the body of your report, you've got the usual relet information, please to advise you that we're on target. In October, the average was twenty days as far, so that's continuing. And the customer feedback on page fifty-five gives you a brief breakdown of the number of complaints we've received and how we handle them, as I've mentioned before. Generally, there's a downturn in the number of complaints we've received. And just for a little bit of additional information, on paragraph twenty-two on page fifty-six, the one level three complaint that was upheld was about leasehold services. It was somebody who made a complaint about a charge that had been on their service, service charge bill. And unfortunately was very narrow, so that was upheld and made the apology.
Very, thank you very much indeed. Again, very good point. Anybody else make comments? Michael?
It's a quick one. I mean, clearly with the universal credit, organising direct debits and making quite sure that the money goes to us as soon as it comes to them. But what, you haven't probably even got the figure, roughly how many who are on universal credit have got bank accounts? Because that's the worry.
Well, my understanding is to get universal credit, you will have to have a bank account, yes, yeah.
But you don't for benefits at the moment.
I don't think you do, pensions, I mean, there's a real push and we would encourage and support people and assist them in getting them again.
And is it a credit union as well?
Yes.
We've worked with the credit union as well.
We estimate, what, five hundred people per year that potentially move on to universal credit? I think that's a big difference.
Tony?
As a comment, Waverley are right at the very, very top for collecting in council money and that. And I suspect that looking at your greens and that, and I know universal benefit is going to cause a hiccup. But I should think you're doing extremely well in relation to other councils on this. And as soon as we can get some comparisons, we must shout how well you're doing eventually.
Yeah, if I can confirm that, I mean, our debt is point eight percent of the rent roll. Which, I mean, there would be very few councils and very few housing associations with that low level. As I say, we are lucky with the money paid directly for people on benefit and there is going to be this challenge. And we need to be more sophisticated. And as Annalisa mentioned, we wish to purchase some software, which would be a growth item into the budgets. It could be around twenty-six thousand, between thirty thousand that we need. And that will be an ongoing expense, but as you say, this would probably, we won't need to recruit two additional members of staff. So it's cheaper. So what we're asking when it does come to this committing the budgets, that that growth item is supported.
I'd go to suggest that, naturally, but we have a recommendation to have direct to me. Richard?
Thank you, Chairman. Back onto universal credit. So we're going to provide training for officers to cope with the problems that clearly have come up so far. Is anything being thought about or carried out in the authorities that have already done battle with universal credit? About actually trying to train the potential recipients? You know, Damien said we've got five hundred people out there who are potentially in line for this. Some of them are clearly going to have to go through a learning process at some stage, irrespective of whether we do it upfront or we wait for the problem and then do it. It's thought being given to providing packages that might help.
I mean, we've had staff trained who, because we've got a responsibility of people that probably can't use IT. And so we have officers trained who do help people to make claims and to manage their universal credit. It's hard to test how successful we are because the flow has been so small in terms of those people. And then the other thing is around getting people back to work, so there are other teams that have been attempted. So people get off universal credit and then help and get them back to work, because that's the whole point of the, of universal credit or one of the main objectives. So again, we've been doing work around that as well with people.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, Lewis?
I just wanted to talk about the new software. Would that be something that's a bolt on into Orchard?
Yes.
So no double entry?
No double entry.
Yeah, I suppose it's just to clarify what bolted is the data gets sacked out from Orchard and then it's analysed and then we get it back.
But as a systematic process?
It's a systematic process, yes.
There's no, that better.
Thank you. Can I put the recommendation segment we have in front of us, but I want to add three? Okay, so if you're happy with the recommendations you've got, say so, and then after that, what I want to do. Because I want to put in a specific recommendation about the specialist software. And I think we recommend very strongly that we funding is prioritised for our software. And that saves us employing two people. So if you're happy with that, that will go in. Annalise mentioned in her presentation that we record and we produce figures on rent collection. But in view of what's happening on the universal credit, we ought to perhaps for a while at least have rent arrears recorded. Are we happy with that?
Yes.
And finally, I think we should have a follow-up report in March 2018. The looks of processes and working with our partners on debt. Are you happy with that? All happy? Okay, then they're all agreed. Hugh, now on to future of Waverley Shelter Houses.
In the minutes of the last meeting, I see that you looked at this in detail. I won't go into too much to the background of where we got to, but this, I would sort of continue the story if we're from the last meeting. Despite the efforts of councillors, the tenants panel, et cetera, the Surrey Council have confirmed that they're seeing the payment of the housing related support funding, which was paid for a contribution of the shelter housing service. The scheme managers in the schemes, we've got eight schemes, provided a range of services. They could provide support, manage the buildings, manage the health and safety of buildings and also do some tenancy management. Now, the support element included assessing people as they go into the scheme, making sure that their needs are met, where they have the aids and adoptions. They had a support plan, a risk assessment, and signposted to different, as required, to different services. And then we monitored their, the health and their wellbeing. Gradually over time, that monitoring reduced. At one time when supporting people started, it was like a quarterly review of the support plan, that went to half yearly. And at the last round of production of supporting people, we put it back to doing an annual review of that. So why I've gone into a bit of detail about the support service is going forward with the removal of housing related support. We will not be able to provide that service going forward. There's case law around that the housing revenue account can't be used to fund support services. And therefore the service will need to change, and that's why the key point I need to emphasise. But one of the things that, from our conversations with tenants, with the Self and Castle King, have been around a number of times because of previous reductions. There was a need for presence on our sites, on the shelter housing sites. And we've been doing some work with finance and we've identified money ourselves to actually keep eight scheme managers going. So we will have eight, be able to have eight scheme managers. And so we will retain a presence on the site. As I say, there will be a change in the service to be delivered. And really to sum up what the role of, for me, of the scheme manager would be moving forward, is to make sure that their scheme is thriving. In terms of, you know, we have a hundred percent occupancy. We ensure that the health and wellbeing of our tenants is generally, that the buildings look good, that they're well maintained. That all the health and safety measures are in place, that we've all the work we've done in the last couple of years around that. And that they actually own the scheme. And many of them do that, but it's not, we've been actually willing to, we've reviewed their job descriptions, it wasn't actually in their job descriptions. So we're also looking for them to actually look out more into the community. And see, start to use the shelter schemes as a community resource that people can come into. And we've done some work already on that, the scheme at Rovson House, there's a luxury club, Orchard Club that has used Rovson House. And what, when we do go around and talk to tenants, we need to say that they need to open up their schemes. So to help us move forward on that, and I think we need to emphasise the change, that there is a change in the service. We're looking to rebrand the service. And this is good to some long-term strength, resilience, in that it will have a sort of have a brand. And have some presence within the local communities, in the local villages and in the towns. They are so sort of hidden away and people wouldn't even know this, I think we want to make them be outgoing. So we talked to, funny enough, to the tenants panel and we talked to the council king and councillor else for older people. We've started off with retirement living, that wasn't light. So we're sort of, at the moment, looking at senior living and senior living schemes. And the scheme manager's jobs title will be called senior living business managers. And it's the idea that, within them, that they're there to make them a thriving building. So we have found the funding in terms of, to keep to the eight. There is an assistant scheme manager, which that post would be deleted. But we do have one vacancy as a scheme manager still, so the risk of redundancies are minimal. There will be, there are some challenges or some risk in that the job descriptions will be changed. So some scheme managers may opt to actually go for redundancy. But this, what we're proposing here is that it keeps the eight scheme managers posts. We still have thriving schemes and we do have a way more going forward. One of the other recommendations is we to have what we call extra care schemes in Farnham. They're not particularly extra care schemes in terms of the sort of what people might imagine with great facilities and cafes and that. It's basically social services, we've got an office there.
Inside.
Inside. For many years, despite my efforts, personal efforts, is that we had allocated properties in there to people who actually need extra care. That hasn't happened, so we have not really wanted to get involved in that. So the numbers of people actually needing extra care within those schemes are literally a handful. And so we're actually looking just to declassify that, so it just takes that sort of noise out, it's just a shelter scheme. And we'll be consulting on that particular, on that issue in those particular schemes. So this is just purely a proposal, but in terms of some initial kind of consultation with tenants panel, with councillor King, councillor else. And what we know, because we have been at the schemes many times, getting feedback, what the tenants require. And so what we're going to be doing is doing a consultation process with the tenants. Going to each scheme, so councillor King has always attended those, we'll be inviting the tenants panel. And we'll also be inviting the local board councillors this time. And to invite them, so they know what's happening. We also need to go through a consultation process with staff. We're going to do those in parallel and hopefully we can come to the same conclusion. To where we're going, that we can conclude that our proposals are accepted or amendments are made to it. And then hopefully, aiming for the first of April, that we have the new service in place. I think in terms of the transformation of the schemes, the branding, et cetera, will be a year's project going forward. We're really, in a really good place in terms of the reputation of the schemes. We are a hundred percent occupancy, I mean, because that can change from day to day, but generally, the occupancy is really good. occupancy. I mean, of course, that can change from day to day, but generally, the occupancy is really good. I think a couple of years ago, we did, some schemes were quite difficult to let, but from the feedback, perhaps some maybe, but some schemes we do have people, you know, really desperate to go in. But I think it's to build on that. I suppose the vision we would have to, in terms of translating it to the scheme managers, that we had people, you know, really queuing up to go into these schemes because of their reputation. And despite what we're losing the support element that we were providing before. The people, just to say who meet the standards, and it is a very high, high, high level, is that they can seek funding for, as an individual, under the Care Act for any support and care that they need, and that will continue. So really, it's just looking for any thoughts about the way forward, any other comments really?
Hugh, thank you very much. That sounds very positive, because it was looking very gloomy on stage, but that is much more positive. But do try not to put people in there who are so young that in fact it rather disturbs all the others that are in there. Because that's a complaint I have.
I very rarely, only be a disabled person who's not under the time age. So you've got Michael's age?
Yeah, we can look at people from the age fifty-five if there's a disability and everything, but it's purely at the discretion of the the shelter scheme manager anyway, the shelter scheme service manager. If we do go for any, and it's based on disability and fitting in, yeah, it has to make sure there's a fit.
Because the fit was fine.
We, but we can't think of a case where we've actually recently let to someone that's under the time age. But you do, but we do have a generation, may have institutional issues, because don't forget, even if you've got someone at sixty-five, you've still got someone that could be a hundred. So you could have a clash of lifestyles between that. So that's still a big gap. But I think, yeah, one of our, we haven't explicitly put it here, one of our objectives is to ensure that this is for older people. And that's just maybe crossed our mind to actually lower the age.
That's good. Well done. Please.
Just something, when you talk about, you talk about schemes and that, for me, it feels very sort of corporate and not very not very sort of like homely or I feel the word is, I mean, you know, senior living communities or something like that. I just find the word schemes myself, it sounds, it's like disassociating with living there almost.
I do agree with you. Yeah, it crossed my mind a few times, but I couldn't come up with an alternative. But yeah, I think we need to move away from the schemes.
You know, it doesn't sound particularly.
And again, that helps that reinforcement of there is a change that we're
Yes.
We're not getting scheme managers, so we think we shouldn't have schemes. But yeah, that's good.
Patricia?
Thank you. Sorry, I don't wish to be negative, but I must say that I was really pleased to hear you say you will be consulting or advising a local ward member. Unfortunately, I felt so I let my, the people in the accommodation in my ward down by not knowing about this until they actually contacted me. So could you please ensure as a ward councillor, you get to know?
Yes.
Thank you.
It is very important, actually. More cancers, I mean, when we were consulting, quote, on doing away with the community rooms, to ask people to be involved as the ward councillors, and only because they knowed. And then they were told. So we're not good at it, involving ward councillors when we make changes. So if we could improve that, that I think would be more thoughtful.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Hugh, the managers' hours, would it be sort of similar hours that they've got now, now to five?
Yeah, I'd thought of changing that.
Not Saturday work?
No, no.
Okay, thank you.
It's fine.
Could I just ask a quick question? When you talk about ward councillors, is it the ward councillor where the Sheltered Housing is, or the catchment of that particular place? Because my villages, for example, don't have Sheltered Housing, but they all go to, generally speaking, Bramley. And our ward councillors, you know, is it just going to be Bramley, for example, for London Court, or is it going to be councillors that represent the catchment area?
I think, yeah.
Perhaps we could just send a note to all councillors and just confirm.
All councillors.
Perhaps send a note to all councillors and confirm when the dates and times of the meetings are, and say if you wish to come, please come.
That's good.
Chairman, just to support that concept, you know, a lot of the things that happen at London Court and Bramley go right the way across to Shamley Green.
They do.
Oneish, like, et cetera. So, you know, we hunt as a pack when it's inactive action. It would be good to make sure that comes along.
Excellent. Anybody else? My miss, can you? Good. Thank you very much indeed. I haven't got a recommendation, but we've noted the good work that you're doing. Oh, there is one comment I would like. We're going out to consultation with the staff on this. I know you're all very keen in your wards and talking to the staff, but please, you must not get involved in this issue. If there is a problem, you know, there is a member staff who is very upset, you refer them to their line manager. But do not get involved, because it could upset the whole thing.
Just want to point a thing, going back in recommendations, but just to clarify, this will be a growth. So it will be a growth of, you know, fifteen, hundred and seventy appearing in the new budget. But we've got the funding for it. But it's just to confirm that. And again, when it, if it comes to this committee, hopefully they can support that growth bid.
I'm sure you can rely on us to support the growth bid, Hugh. Thank you very much indeed. Oxford Ridge Regeneration Project.
Thank you, Chairman. What I've done is to prepare just a brief budget point update for you on the project, which will come to committee every time, I believe that was requested. And really not to go through it in any detail and to pick up questions on it, just to say that all aspects of the project are moving forward satisfactorily. It's been a long time coming, as they say, but certainly the new refurbishment of the properties with the new contractors got off to a very good start. And we're hoping for all of the tenants to be returned to their refurbished properties by the end of February. Site D, sixteen units, if you've gone through Oxford Ridge, or see the contractors there and the houses of that's going up, that's on programme. Site A, the largest of the sites, received its full planning mission on the twenty-second of September, I believe it was. And then Site B, sixteen units, is going to committee later this month, next week. We were very pleased to finally acquire the last property from an owner proprietor on what's known as Site C, which enables us now to begin to work up that site for development. And looking at the budgets, and this needs to go through the relevant committee processes, but we will have the funding to complete the development work on Oxford Ridge, which I'm very pleased about. So at one point, we wondered whether we might have to go into some kind of a partnership with the Housing Association for the last site. That would be mixing the landlords on the ridge. I don't think that would be a good idea. Thankfully now we have the funding for that. And as I say, that would need to get the necessary approvals, but that's encouraging. So I would say, members, a encouraging report for this time. I'm happy to take any questions as it's twenty fifty-eight.
Yes. We have already had a discussion on this, I know, Andrew, and I would first of all like to thank our friend here for putting this together. However, we started this in August. We're now almost into December, and we have not started this project. Before we leave, I would like us to agree a date when the committee start looking at this. It's no good if we're looking at something, we're now reading it, and then we find we can't do it because nobody has it has to be signed off by all these different officers, et cetera. Sorry, Damian, but this is not what this is all about. This is about looking at these things and getting on with them. If we can pick everywhere and say it's all right, that's fine. But, you know, I had to chase this this week, because we were doing nothing. Now, we think in this committee that it's an important project. And therefore, I would like us, if I could ask Fiona to get a date from members who are on the task room, and we will start this, and then we will decide who we are going to call as witnesses. Sorry to have a moment. It was such a good meeting with so many good points.
Could I ask you a question? Is there any chance of someone moving into these you properties in Oxford Ridge who have not lived there before?
Yes, yes. What we're doing is providing new homes for everybody that wants to remain on the ridge. So if their home has been demolished and they want to remain on Oxford Ridge and have a new property there, some have wanted to move off. And at the end of the project, we will have a surplus of houses. We will be able to re-accommodate everybody who wants to remain on the ridge. And then there will be new people coming in to live in the new properties that will bid through the system in the normal way.
Well, can I tell you why? We're running Godming, what is known as a welcome to Godming pack. And this first of all has to be personalised. We will not give it to estate agents just to hand out. It has to be to someone. But we find it's no point in giving it to someone who's just moved down the road. So what he does is introduce you to all the services and everything else. And I'm sure Waverly might actually like to put some of their stuff in it, because it tells you where to go if you've got a problem and everything else. I've never thought of that before, but it's been going. So if you've got people coming into there,
Yes, thank you.
let me know, and we will make sure that they get a welcome pack.
Thank you.
That's good. Very good. Anyway, yes.
Thank you, Chairman. At the last meeting of our committee, I was charged with joining the overview of scrutiny project on capital project slippage, funding slippage. And one of the things that came out of that first meeting was something that I've actually asked for twice at previous meetings here, and that is it would be really nice to have a simple Gantt chart of project progress, so that we can actually see where Oxford Ridge, very simple, you know, high level thing, but words struggle to have the same impact as a good Gantt chart. And that was just a common theme across many projects. So that was a request. And then just looking at your budget numbers, you've got a budget slippage for Site A of around forty percent. Can you tell us what the cause of that is?
Because what you need to realise with the development is that things can take considerably longer. And so it's helpful to look at an overall scheme rather than just individual years over a period of years. So for example, with Site A, we had the whole issue of having to do our back surveys. Something we hadn't realised, it was something that we were told we had to do, they couldn't be done in May. So immediately, you've lost nine months. It's just one of those things. And so therefore, we've, things are progressing well, but not nearly as fast as we first predicted. But there are things that come out that you cannot predict in development. You just don't know. So you have to make the contingencies and ensure that you have the budget approved, and then over the period of time, over the period of years, then you'll deliver that scheme. It's very common in housing associations. I've been there.
I understand. You're obviously concerned for that particular
Yes, of course.
class group business to make sure we don't have money sitting around unused.
Yes, of course.
And so in the same theme, you've got, for refurbishment phase two, you've got a spend of a little over a million scheduled for this year, which so far very little has been spent, no sign of potential carryover. Just what's the confidence level of you being able to spend that money? Or should it be starting to be flagged as something that's risky?
Just trying to think, phase one is phase two with refurbishment. We had pilot phase, phase one, phase two. I think phase two is the externals only.
External, that's right.
Yes, and that is moving forward. The properties are being surveyed, and there's every intention of spending that money. Again, until we've surveyed those properties, it's very difficult to know exactly what it's going to cost. So that will roll out in the next few months.
That's mine. It works on track.
Yes.
Okay, thanks, Chair.
Thank you, Chairman. Just on this issue, I think we've recognised that the way the system works as a budget manager, there's been an incentive to ask for the budget that you hoped you could deliver against, not necessarily what you realistically deliver against. And so we've shifted things around now. So in the future, if a budget manager asks for an amount of money that isn't the top amount, the optimum amount, but later in the year they deliver ahead of schedule, they are able to go back and draw down further funds. And so they're not automatically owing on the most optimum position, because that will always create some overspend. And so some more pragmatic, sensible budgeting, I think, will have to go forward.
Well, it's interesting, because when we come to the next items, which is the Chief Work Programme, a scrutiny tracker has been produced. And it's willing to, oh, it's the H. Any other questions? Andrew, thank you very much. That's very thoughtful. So we know what you have brought. If we move on now to item thirty, even earlier, and that is the committee work programme. Now, you've got it in your report, pages seventy-five to ninety-six. Alex, this is you.
Thank you, Chair. Let's draw your attention to section A, the work programme, which lists the programme going on for January, March and beyond. So you've got some dates next to things, and to alert members' attention to what we've got coming up in January. So as far as I'm aware, we have the tenancy agreement review, which will be the next stage in the process. The draft housing strategy, the housing maintenance contracts procurement update. We'll be looking at the three-year service plans, the Oxford Ridge progress updates, and also from this meeting, item N, the aggressive IT systems with housing. And one, to the final point we have, I have changed the work programme slightly this time around for the meeting. So section B now lists the in-depth scrutiny reviews, and section C is now the scrutiny tracker. And now the form, the recommendations is committed, so we have an ongoing page where we can see what we're doing and what's being monitored.
Thank you. Do you want to finish March?
Oh, yes, March.
Coming up in March.
Sure. March, we have the review of age-related properties. An optimistic, let's see what we get to on the review of the design standards. Government proposals on housing related support funding, quarter free performance reporting and the Oxford Ridge Regeneration Project. Also, the homelessness prevention strategy, I think we're going to take to March instead of January. To balance our agendas.
Got another one you've got to turn out in more.
Oh, yes, I'm involved in the work supports. It's quite busy.
Thank you. Now, if you've got anything you want to add to what we've got here, the agenda is a fairly heavy meeting. Please let Alex know. Don't have to do it now. If you let Alex know, that would be very thoughtful. Okay, so we're considering the work programme and we will let Alex know what we do. So agreed?
Agreed.
Very much indeed. I have no items under item fourteen. Oh, anything under item fifteen, and therefore I'll declare the meeting closed, but not quite yet. Damian, this is your last meeting.
Chairman, it is, yes.
So we won't, we won't see you again. But can I just say thank you very much for all the work that you've put in, in the housing, as far as we're concerned. And I think that's been sort of demonstrated by listening to the upbeat reports exceptional we've been having from officers. And I think also, committee can take a little bit of hugos from that, because we sort of did help with the housing maintenance things. But we will miss you. I look forward to hearing about your exploits and apps on your, because I do see some, I can't say still. But good luck.
Thank you.
Sorry you're going, but thank you.
And Chair, if I could just say in response, there has been a transformation, I think, in our housing service over the last few years. And that transformation's come about because there's been a lot of support and goodwill around this table for members, from officers, from the tenants panel, with a determination and a level of ambition.
um, with a determination, uh, uh, and a level of ambition that has enabled us to come so far on the journey. Now, the journey hasn't ended, I think we've already recognized around the table there is still significant work to be done. But I think there's now a confidence that actually there is not, almost nothing that the housing service can't achieve by taking this sort of collaborative, ambitious approach. And I'm really proud of what you've all achieved, I want to thank all of you for what you've done and the support you've given me over the years. But also, I just look forward to seeing so much more happening in the future as an outsider, sort of looking in and hopefully taking some of the ideas and lessons here and utilizing it in the.
They won't charge you.
I'm not the one who has the hopelessness and epson of you.
Exactly.
Yes.
Huge thank you to everybody around this table, um, and good luck for the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think one of the things we've achieved is all working together, members and officers.
Definitely.
And you don't get that in all councillors.
No.
Um, so from my point of view, I think that's really pretty good.
And, and Chairman, it would be inappropriate for me to say that I had a favorite overview and scrutiny committee.
Yes, it would.
It's this one. But thank you, David, and good luck in the future. And thank you, everybody. Walter, we should be watching your pursuits with interest, especially apart from aggressor. Thank you. No, same for you all.